Well, welcome. Tonight, we go through at least the first part of the articles for the town meeting. There's a very large list this year, forty-nine. So this show could be part one. I'm almost sure of it. And then we'll take a break and come back and do part two and finish it up. Why don't we start with introductions?
Hi, I'm David Levine. I'm Brother Fincon.
Hi, I'm Brent Hornberger, also from the Finance Committee.
Hi, I'm Chris Wilson, School Committee and Planning Board.
Okay, so why don't we start? Number-one article, ADA Improvement Plan.
This is one that we see every year, and I like seeing the hundred fifty thousand dollars year after year on making improvements in town to make it more accessible to people with special needs. Again, it's something we see every year, so if you've been paying attention, this would look familiar to you, and I'm glad to see that we're funding it again. It's number-one on the warrant.
And the idea was, we're gonna put a hundred fifty thousand dollars into Rick Vilani, Town Administrator. And I think he does fifty thousand for the school, fifty thousand for municipal, and fifty thousand for parks.
I think that's right.
Yep. And if we keep doing it every year, it doesn't hurt as much, but we keep biting away little by little.
Keep making improvements.
Steady improvements, exactly. So the second one, Substance Abuse Outreach Program. Sixty thousand dollars.
So this one, you know, sixty thousand dollars, I think it's really coming from opioid settlement. What's cool about this type of project for substance abuse outreach is what you're doing is putting money into resources that are gonna keep people who are in need, give them support, and keep it away from making it a police matter. You know, there's people in town that are struggling with addiction and have all types of problems that need different types of services. And, you know, you've seen, under the new chief of police, you know, an emphasis to try to bring in other types of resources in town, because sometimes when people are in crisis, you know, having a police officer isn't necessarily the right response. So I think that they're going in the right direction with these types of programs.
Yeah, this is one of those programs that you can't touch and see, but you can feel it. It's such a good social program to have that, you know, town's lucky to be a part of.
The strange part is when people say, "How'd you come up with sixty thousand dollars?" And you gotta remember that this is a regional program. So if you wanna participate as a town, you kick in two dollars per resident. So Milford's got thirty thousand people on the books, and costs us sixty thousand to participate.
Seems like a good investment.
Number-three, this one brought up some questions. Traffic Surveillance Infrastructure. Hundred fifty thousand dollars.
This'll be great for the people that have the hit-and-runs and have to go for the insurance claims and pay their deductibles. So this is more of an infrastructure, so where the, you know, the police will have the ability to see if there's any accidents, and they can track the person down. So it's a good benefit to have, and it's not obstructive to, to homes. It's not gonna be something that Big Brother is not gonna be looking in your driveway or windows or anything like that. It's more on the public ways. So it's a, it's a great investment, and it saves insurance dollars as well.
And Robbie, well, Chief Tassino now, mentioned that every incident, every accident, the light was always green for all the cars involved, which...
Everybody has a green light.
Everybody had the green light. It was you that had the red light. I had the green light. But he said by filming the intersections, it really makes it clear as to who had the less green light.
That's right. Now, you know, he described going door-to-door to look to see if you can get ring camera footage from residents to try to help with hit-and-runs and these types of accidents. You think to yourself, "Okay, there's, there's a lot of cameras out there and about, you know, and I think we could probably do better."
Yeah. And I think people may be concerned with privacy, but again, everybody has a ring camera or some type of surveillance in and around their house, or a large majority. So again, it's not pointing at your driveway, it's pointing at our intersections in our streets, and it's just to keep people safer.
And I think that was the big concern, is they're gonna be pointing it at the Hornberger House and seeing what's going on in there, which, that pesky constitution would kinda say that's not a nice thing to do. But filming public intersections to help them with crime investig-- not crime, but accident investigation is something that will really help. I haven't gotten the list, I haven't seen the list of all the intersections they'll do, but apparently there's a number of them.
I'm sure there are. If you drive around town, you, you know that there's some, definitely some intersections of, of interest that would be, these would be beneficial to the community.
Number-four, the Fire Suppression System for the Library.
Yeah, this is a fifty thousand dollar cost as part of capital planning to update the fire suppression, the sprinkler system inside the library. The one we have now has been in place, I think it was fifteen years from memory, I didn't have it in my notes here, but I think that's how long it was. You know, it's, it's gotten to the point where it's not as operational as it needs to be. You know, there's some sludge buildup in the pipes. We've gotten our money's worth out of it. Thankfully, we haven't had to use it for a fire. There's codes that we need to keep up with. We obviously wanna make the public library a safe place. We need to make sure the fire suppression system is ready to go. So that's what this project does.
And I'm wondering, they got the bids after they put the article in, so it's a question of is fifty thousand gonna be enough? Or do they have to wait and come back? 'Cause we had that long discussion about a dry system versus a wet system. And then we find out they're both wet. It's just one is more wet than the other. Apparently, the end, the terminal end, is either kept with air and dry, or kept underwater pressure. And the big deal was that, it's kinda like the pilings you hear about in the Back Bay or whatever, that as long as they were underwater, they were preserved. The minute the water level went down, they start to rot. And that's the same thing with this fire suppression system. And Halon is not acceptable. 'Cause like on a boat, on my boat, I had a Halon system. There were a fire, it just took the oxygen away. One, it's very expensive, but two, if somebody's inside, you really don't wanna be removing all the oxygen while somebody's still in the building.
Probably not.
So this will be for the wet system, which again just means the water's right to the tip, right to the sprinkler head. But I'll be interested to see if the fifty thousand dollar bid is legitimate. We have Personnel Board, Article Number Five. And this is talking about... Anybody wanna comment on it?
Sure. It's a no-cost to the town, so there's zero dollars being asked in this. And as I understand it, it's really about clarifying the language around, you know, sick leave sort of buyback program that's in place. They wanna change some language. Obviously, anybody who has the warrant can see all the amendments to the various sections, but as I understand it, there's no change in the actual benefit or the cost to the town. They're just clarifying some language that I will confess is a little bit beyond my expertise.
Years ago, we had sick leave buyback for the whole town. So you could just carry forward, like my company lets you carry a week forward. So if you don't use your vacation and your sick leave this year, if you have five weeks, well, you can only carry a week forward. Used to be that you could save that. So all of a sudden, you got people retiring after ten, twenty years with six months, a ye-- a year of sick leave still to be used. That got done away with for everybody but police and fire, 'cause that's in their contract. Well, it wasn't fair that you had it, and all of a sudden, we're coming back to you saying, "Remember that provision that we paid, we said we'd pay for? Just kidding." So what they did, which I thought was fair, is they grandfathered in all the existing employees. So it's been years that as the employees retire, that goes away. And my understanding is, there's nobody left that's grandfathered. So this cleans up, as Brent said, it cleans up the language, 'cause it removes it, 'cause it's still there, and people are saying, "Well, who gets grandfathered in?" Well, nobody. Okay, Article Six. Naming Issue.
I believe in Article Six, what we're doing here is changing from the Industrial Development Commission to the Economic Development Commission. Deleting some sections, striking some wording and putting it, replacing it with a new definition. And I believe it's as simple as a stronger name, that's probably a little bit more appropriate for what the function is, but just a naming thing.
More of a branding than anything.
Yeah, this reminds me of when we used to have the Milford Geriatric Authority, and they changed it to Countryside, 'cause people didn't wanna say, "I'm going to the Geriatric Authority." Nothing changed, but the name felt more warm and inviting.
Yeah, industrial just pigeonholes you into thinking of it as industrial business park or...
Steel plants, coal plants.
Yeah, so how it's economic just broadens it.
Now, we run into Article Seven, the Library Furniture. And mainly, the carpet.
Yeah, that carpet's been, been around for about fifteen years, and with all the traffic. This is all right when you walk into the, into the library and down the stairs, it has a lot of traffic, a lot of walking, children running back and forth, so it's, I guess it's time to redo it.
I was amazed when they said that they had ninety-seven thousand visits. It's only thirty thousand people in Milford, but they go to the library a lot, which is good news. So this will be replacing the carpet, as you say, that's given us fifteen years. I just can't imagine ninety-seven thousand times people walked up and down those carpets per year.
In all weather.
In the one year.
Yeah, in all weather.
Right, exactly. Okay, Article Eight.
So Article Eight is a twenty thousand dollar ask to put in some, some geets, and it's off of Haven Street and Walden Way Road. So if you know Haven Street before you go up the hill there, there's some public lands that make its way back over to their side to that fifty-five-plus community, it's Walden Way, if I believe.
Walden Woods.
Walden Woods, thank you. And if you go back in the woods, 'cause it's, it's public land, I mean, if you go back there, I sometimes ride my bike through there, you see there's a lot of dumping that goes on back there. I think the most noticeable is a set of stairs that came out of, it looks like a vinyl pool that had been sitting there for quite a while, and looked like, unless somebody gets them, they're probably gonna sit there forever. Stuff like that is being dumped back there. So what they wanna do is block what's kind of like a dirt path that a Jeep could go on, you know, make it so a Jeep or truck can't go four-wheeling back there and dump trash back there. So twenty thousand dollar ask, and it's really to make sure that public lands don't become full of trash.
Well, we had the problem years ago at Asylum Street, where stuff would fall off people's pickup trucks. And you had water heaters and refrigerators and all sorts of stuff. And it's not just unpleasant. There's actually a safety issue when you start seeing loads of stuff dumped there, 'cause the kids go back there.
Just wanna point out that the gate won't hinder Brent or anybody else from bike-riding down there as well. Just wanna make, make it known that they'd still have access to the public as well.
Yeah, and that was a point Brent drove home to say, "Are you gonna limit access for legitimate people on bicycles or walking?"
Go for a hike back there, yeah.
Right.
There's a big chunk of property back there, so it's a nice resource that we have.
Okay. Article Number Nine, Elevator Upgrades. We had put money aside, or allocated money years ago, to fix some elevators in the municipal buildings.
Yeah, I guess we voted on an article that was just for Town Hall, and then there's some funds available to use to for the elevators. So this, this article just opens it up to the other municipal buildings, so we can repair elevators in other buildings.
Yeah, and that follows what we wanna see, is that if we allocate a hundred dollars to do a school project, say, fix something at Memorial, if you only spend seventy, you don't get the other thirty.
Right.
Okay? You gotta bring that back to Town Meeting and say, "Okay, we wanna fix this at Stacy." Now, we happen to have thirty bucks over here that we can use to either offset partial or the whole project. It's the same thing here. Not allowing people just to divert money, to me, is a good idea. So Rick Vilani came back and said, "There's fifty-five grand left. We have other elevators that need replaced," or not replaced, but repaired. So he's asking the town to allocate, okay, the members, the voting members, 'cause if you think about it, Town Meeting has to approve every penny spent. So this fifty-five thousand dollars legitimately can't be spent, 'cause we already fixed the elevators that we said we were going to. But it's nice that we got the extra money, so now you can go back to Town Meeting and say, "Hey, how about letting us fix these other elevators?" Okay. The Director of IT changing the grade of his pay.
Yeah, Article Ten, Small Dollars. When you look at this project, it looks, this, this ask, I should say, they're saying that the increase out of the gates is about two thousand dollars. But what it's about is really looking at the IT Director and moving from a grade thirteen to grade fourteen. Now, I'm not expert in all the different pay grades inside of our HR department, but what I would say is, if I think about the last two, three years, the amount of time we spend with the IT Director talking about the needs of the town and the projects that he's running, and they all really fall under the umbrella of, there's a lot of infrastructure, including things in this warrant, that, that really just need modernization. The requirement of a technology director is just increasing every single year, and I think we're lucky to have the one we have. So I wasn't surprised at all to see this increase in grade, because, you know, Chris George is in front of us almost every single week for an update on something that he's working on, or an update on something that's coming. And you just, you stop and think, like, what could that really mean? But think about all the communications, including those things we're gonna talk about in this warrant, that enable fire and rescue and ambulances and police and communications between departments and, you know, you think about how much modern life has changed. It, it makes a lot of sense that the IT Director role in a town of our size with our growth is on, is, is increasing. Makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, this IT Director is bringing us into the twenty-first century, to tell you the truth. And this was an easy decision, at least on my part, to recommend, recommend favorable, because his, his knowledge is unbelievable.
Well, I think it's not only knowledge, his dedication, because how many meetings we see him coming in now is much, as many times with a police shirt on as he does with his IT shirt.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause he has to get involved in investigations, and he's got all the credentials that allow him to, to help out. I was amazed when they said the pay grade would be this monumental, up to two thousand dollar change. Now, in the future, that just puts him on a better track.
That's right.
So I have no doubt that he'll get compensated for the work he's doing, but the first step was getting him from one track from thirteen to fourteen.
Right, and we did the same thing in the school, where, you know, we felt that some of our, our personnel, they could go to the private sector, and they could make more money, right, in that private sector. So it's, it's to, to look at them and how, in retaining that talent for the benefit of our town and our schools.
Exactly.
Now, we roll into some Bylaw Amendments. Article Eleven talks about Vacation Accrual. And this is again just straightening out some of the language that basically says, "You can't take vacation till you've been here at least three months."
Yeah, that's fairly normal in a lot of working environments. I think it's also, you know, from a finance perspective, there's no increases to benefits in here. I think they're really just kinda clarifying some of the language. And so the dollar, the dollar on this is a zero.
As is Sick Leave Bylaw Amendment Number Twelve. Here again, they're just clarifying how many days you get for how many days you work. I don't think anything changes on that.
Now, this is something similar that we just did with our schools too, in our new contract with the teachers, where I think, as we've gone through the years, it's almost like you're modernizing your, your language to kinda stay up with, with the times.
Yeah, I think the one change was that you're allowed to use some of your PTO for issues with immediate family members.
Okay.
So you can take a sick day if your wife, your child is ill, and it doesn't have to be you. Which to me just makes sense. I mean, we're not changing the number of days you can take. You still have X days. It's just how you use them is a little more liberal.
It becomes more paid time off as opposed to a, a sick day, right?
It makes it more enticing to acquire new talents as well.
Right. Article Thirteen surprised me. It was just my lack of knowledge. It's how many hours you have to work to be benefit-eligible. 'Cause I'm used to industry being thirty hours a week. I didn't know that municipal was twenty.
I didn't either.
I didn't either.
That was new news.
Yeah.
But we're told that there's no cost increase to this, so you're clarifying the language. They're not reducing from thirty to twenty. I think what they're saying is it's always been at this twenty, but I'm just clarifying the language, 'cause there's no cost, you know, related to this. This is presented as.
That's my understanding. I mean, a lot of the language just has to be cleaned up. Now here, we run into one that's real money, Article Fourteen, the Milford Power Pilot.
That was, that was interesting. What I, so this is something that was newer to me. We've had, it looks like we've had an agreement for the last thirty years, so, well, we've been on the Fincon for five, so I guess it's twenty-five years before I got there. But what's kinda neat about this, we're gonna renew for fifteen years, and I think what's neat about it is, we have an agreement, which is pretty friendly to the town, and also probably good for the, the watershed, where they're, they're using wastewater from our treatment plant as cooling water. And in doing so, you know, what you're, what we're doing here is, they're, they're giving us a minimum, it's a guarantee of a minimum, a million dollars a year in payment for doing so. I think there's some, some fees associated with, you know, that they pay for using the water, but we got a minimum one million dollars, you know, from them every year. And I, I just kinda like the, the arrangement. It sounds like a good program.
Well, I don't think most people understand what a pilot program is. That pilot actually means payment in lieu of taxes. So where you can't tax the power company, you do an agreement with them. And they agreed to pay us at least a million dollars a year, whether their assessment went down or not. So we've had, I think, a couple years that the assessment went down and they would've been paying less than a million. It would've been like eight-hundred and ninety or nine-hundred and some. So the, the floor kicks in. No matter what their assessment is, they have to pay us a million dollars. And then I think there's another forty grand for use of wastewater.
Right.
Which to me is a great idea.
Absolutely.
You know, instead of treating water with all the expense of treating water, Uncle Phil won't be happy, but we're not selling them potable water.
Potable water, exactly.
We're selling them wastewater, and they use it to cool, and we get, I think it's another forty grand or so.
Yeah, it's between twenty and forty.
Twenty to forty, depending on the year.
Right.
We're rolling to Number Fifteen, the Leaf Truck.
I think the leaf trucks are probably one of the most popular things in town in the fall. This is that time of year. So this, although I'm looking, this looks like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a new leaf truck. So, you know, first I'd say is, that type of equipment, you know, you look at it and say, "This stuff doesn't last forever." You know, there's always, there's a lot of, it only goes on in trying to keep all these trucks on the road. And our Highway Department is a pretty good job of trying to make sure everything's running here. We're gonna get to three trucks, and it sounds like we're gonna be able to get to every week leaf pickup, which I think is a big deal for people, 'cause everybody feels like they're on the wrong week. It just feels like everybody just gets the wrong week, you know, on every other weekend schedule.
I always think of the year we were week one. So like a good citizen, I picked up the two leaves that had fallen, and I walked them to the end of my driveway and put them down. That is painful, because come the end of the cycle and all the dang leaves are down, what do you do with them? And you end up paying somebody to take them away. Or the time that they would try and get ahead, 'cause the idea was if they have three trucks instead of two, they can actually circle back.
Circle through, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I remember my sainted mother threatening Scott Cristofoli with a broom. She says, "Where's that Scotty guy? He came too early." Because he came a week early to pick up the leaves? She had no idea that they were ahead, and he was coming back. But to her, she had her broom, and she was gonna find the guy who came a week early.
No, it's certainly a great resource that we provide to the town. It's like trash pickup, right? We don't pay any extra for it. You know, it's, we put our trash out every week, and it goes away. These, we bring our leaves to the end of the driveway, end of our yard, and they go away. So it's, you know, it's a, it's just a great resource, and certainly, I would definitely be in favor of adding a third truck and just help to expand the process.
And we've been lucky, because originally, I don't know what they call the, the big heavy-duty scooper trucks that clean out the manholes.
Yes.
Those things were, took two people to operate, and they were so heavy that the cost of running them, the damage they did, was incredible. And all of a sudden, Scotty found these new-type trucks where one person can operate it, and instead of being, I mean, the first trucks, this was, God, must be a couple decades ago, were costing us two-hundred and twenty thousand each back then. Now he's been able to get the contraption for a hundred and twenty, which keeps it going, and now we can have a third truck.
Excellent.
Town Park Renovation, this oughta be a fun one to discuss.
This is a great one to renovate. We got a, a grant from, I think, this was from a former Fincon member, I think, Rashidi, Mike.
Mitch Resity.
Mitch Resity was able to secure a grant for Town Park and for the Pearl Street Basketball Courts, I believe it was, across from the youth center as well. So this article, so this article is for the, I guess, half of the cost, and is to renovate the parking area around there, and to make Town Park more of an enticing place to go.
I think you just look at it as you're freshening up Town Park. We've gotten a lot of years out of the courts, you know, tennis, basketball, everything, and it's time to give it a facelift. My understanding is, nothing will really change, except we'll get real bathrooms, number-one. And number-two, the far basketball courts are gonna be changed into twenty parking places. And anybody who's gone to Claflin Hill Tuesday nights, or to some of the Memorial School events, will be very happy to see those twenty extra spaces.
I'm sure.
Now, the program was estimated at two-point-one to two-point-six, I think.
Two-point-six, I think, for the whole project.
That was the maximum.
Yep.
And the grant was one-point-three. So they covered half of it. The state covered half of it. And then we had our ARPA money, which the Select Board allocated five-thirty-eight thousand?
That's right.
Yes. So that leaves the ask of seven-hundred and forty thousand for the Town Meeting. Now, people should understand, that's the top bid range, the two-point-six million. Jim Azim has said he's hoping it's gonna be less. And again, the question comes up, what happens to that money? Comes back. We made it clear, and the Parks Department confirmed that if it's two-point-five, that hundred thousand comes back to the general fund. It doesn't just get reallocated inside of the parks or anywhere else.
Yeah, I just wanna say, your four of you is probably all pickleball enthusiasts too. So I just wanna make it known that this upgrade to Town Park also includes pickleball courts and street hockey courts. I just think that's, you know, that's just wonderful for the town, and it's, you know, it's a great, people come into town, see Town Park, it's a, it's another drool.
Exactly. And anytime you get a project, any project, doesn't matter the scope, when you can get fifty percent paid for by a grant, I mean, it's certainly, it's in our best benefit to go forward with it.
Exactly.
I really like supporting parks. Town Park is high on my list. I mean, if you go to celebrate Milford Day and see how many people show up on a day like that, and lots of other events that fill Town Park, the community shows up, people really enjoy the space. But if you really take a hard look at it, you'd see a lot of the fencing and a lot of the infrastructure, and say, "It, it really could be better." So seeing us being able to do this for, you know, with some grants and some ARPA money, and obviously there's an ask here, I like, I like the project. I like the idea.
Well, we've had many, many years of use, how many decades, that tennis courts, and then for a while, we had a skate park built onto one of the courts. So it definitely gets used, and it's in a great part of town location-wise, to have a lot of the people who don't have large yards be able to use it.
It's a great gathering place. They do the concerts on there.
Yeah. Claflin Hill does their... Claflin Hill does their Tuesdays, uh, summer concerts.
And not knowing the scope of the project, when they talked about the Pearl Street, uh, basketball courts, will those, the upgrades to those courts replace the courts that they will lose at town park for the parking spots? Is that the, the intention also? Do we know?
I don't know what the intention, but I know the needed work at Pearl Street.
Pearl Street do need. Closer to the youth center.
Right, exactly.
So I think they're going to pick up some courts over at, at town park. I don't think I remember the exact count, but I think it's more about, you know, that youth center and you look at the number of kids that are there. Just being able to have an outside, outside court, you know, the ones there, people parking them sometimes, they're a little rough. You don't look at.
Oh, definitely, yeah. They're rough. They're not fenced in. So I'm sure that, you know, when a bad errant throw or pass goes, it's, it's out onto the streets. So, yeah.
Now who wants to dispel the rumor? Number seventeen.
All the jet truck.
That the sewer department's getting a new jet.
Well, it's.
Fly from one end of Milford to the other.
Yeah, for, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they want a high pressure jet truck.
Truck.
And, uh, so first I think is that if you look at the language in the warrant, um, there is something in here, maybe I'll sit up straight because it talks about the source of funds and it says by taxation or borrowing, and that's not true. Uh, this is really going to be paid for, um, by the sewer department and it's paid for out of ratepayers. So somebody like myself that doesn't have sewers, uh, sewer in, in my neighborhood, we have a septic. I'm not paying for this. The town is paying for this from, uh, the funds that the sewer department runs on its own.
You can trip in if you want.
That's like the optional taxes opportunity on, yeah. Uh, so I look at this and say, well, it's a project, um, this jet truck, um, I don't think you're going to go very far on it. But if this was cleaning out the lines that are going to prevent a sewage backup in your neighborhood, you feel pretty good about this thing. So what it's literally doing, what it's used for is to, is to clear out, you know, blockages in sewer lines. Um, so you can imagine the repercussions of a backup in the sewer line. That's something you want to avoid. The truck we have right now is twenty-two years old. They're funding it the right way. They're funding it by saving money and scrolling away a little bit of money out of the rates that they, the ratepayers in the, in the, you know, uh, you know, pay.
We haven't had a rate increase in what, ten years, twelve years? I mean, hats off to my Nini and crew.
Yeah, they do a great job down there.
You know, that they've been able to keep everything going. But anybody who doubts why we should have a truck like this just has to look at Lawrence Street. You know, when people's, uh, basements were flooding with sewer water. Not something that's pleasantly thought of.
Not at all.
But again, this truck is going to take, I think, two years, a year and a half to order and get. So they're keeping Band-Aids on the old one just in case.
Just in case.
Town meeting study committee.
Well, it's free and as the town meeting study committee is saying, hey, we've fulfilled our mission and we can now be dissolved. We make a favorable recommendation on that. We think they've done a lot of work over the years, of course, and I think a lot of everybody in the town meeting as a member has seen a lot of their work product. Um, but it sounds like they're calling it, they're calling it a day and saying, mission complete.
Yeah, I think we need to give kudos to Reno and his team out there because he's put a lot of hard work into this study and, um, I'm not quite sure how much of, um, attention it got that it needed, but, um, Reno put his heart and soul into this.
Certainly did.
Well, some of the things you didn't even notice, like the limit on not getting up for an hour and filibustering. You know, Reno's committee took it up and I think it's worked smooth. You get whatever it is, first time, five minutes or ten minutes. Then you have to wait till everybody else goes and then you get another five minutes. I mean, we had people filibustering articles which would take, I mean, I remember the, we went through the town budget in twenty minutes and then spent two and a half hours talking about chickens.
I think you're right.
It was amazing to spend that much time talking about rogue roosters buying pot on Main Street and running around giving everybody the avian flu. It was like, come on, seriously?
Important things are.
Exactly.
I guess if you're the rooster. I'll never forget that year I had to give the snow and ice budget. And I decided, I'm not going to go into all these details. I got upset. It snowed. We had it removed. Now we have to pay for it. Then I said, but I want it, everybody understand I have good word that no chickens were harmed during the removal of the snow. Okay, number nineteen, an unpaid bill. You want to explain why the town didn't pay their ten thousand dollar bill to the people who run town meeting?
Yes, I think this one goes back into something you said five, ten minutes ago, where like every single thing has to go through town meeting. The bill came too late here and even though we've, we, we would have paid it if it came last year, uh, came too late. And so, uh, they didn't get the bill in, uh, in time, so it doesn't need to go to town meeting to approve a ten thousand, six hundred dollar bill for something that we legitimately owe and intend to pay, but we can't do it without.
This was the people who run the hybrid town meeting, all of the electronics that allow us to do a hybrid town meeting. And yes, they didn't get the bill to us in time. Then worse, yes, we have a grace period of two weeks after we close the fiscal year. That if the FinCom and the select board agree, we can pay off any stragglers, any late bills that come in. They didn't get it to us there. So it comes in the end of July and we're like, um, okay, the books are closed, the grace period's closed, but they did legitimately did the work. So this just pays the ten thousand, six hundred dollars. Come spring, it's always funny to try and explain to somebody why we're asking town meeting permission to take back thirty-two dollars and eighty cents on an article. Because we allocated a hundred dollars. The people only spent sixty-six. So you got thirty-two dollars. You can't spend it. You can't do anything with it. So you have to ask town meeting to take it back, put it in the general fund and start again. We've had some as small as six dollars. So luckily Zach came up with an idea years ago where he puts them all together. We used to vote on each one. You'd be there for days. But this way he takes the ten or fifteen, puts them all on one, lists them so you can see them and town meeting votes on it. Comprehensive plan, a hundred and three thousand dollars.
I can handle this one. So, uh, obviously it's twenty twenty-three and the last plan was in, in two thousand and three. So certainly our, our economic or, excuse me, our, our comprehensive redevelopment plan is in much need to be, uh, redone, um, and, and, and updated. So again, this, this request from the planning board is to, you know, we work with an outside agency that, that develops these types of plans for our town. So, you know, there is some grant money out there, um, in the tune of about sixty thousand dollars. So there's still another hundred thousand dollar request that the, uh, planning board would utilize to help create this comprehensive plan and kind of see what the, what the future of Milford will look like.
And normally towns update their plan every decade, every ten years. We've stretched this one to twenty. But I mean, I was amazed when, um, Joe Calgioni told us that ninety-five percent of Milford is built out. So this plan is going to be helping us figure out what we can do with the built out areas we have. I mean, you see every year we take back some land, we reallocate some land. But this is looking at what can we do, one, to increase the revenue, if it's appropriate, but two, to increase the effective use of the land. And I always love it because it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They give you a sixty thousand dollar discount, so it only costs you a hundred thousand dollars. It's like when my kids go shopping and say, look at all the money I saved you. I bought everything on sale, bought twice as much. But the plan has served Milford well. Okay, youth center van. This brought up some discussion.
Yeah, this is, I think, the most, uh, topic of conversation on this one. So the, the youth center is looking for a twelve to fifteen passenger van. Um, the reason why, uh, they're looking for it is because for, uh, summer camp trips, for after school programs, there's a lot of, they have, also have a lot of activity. They go around town picking up donations, um, for their events. So, um, there's definitely a year round need for it. We, there was a lot of talk about trying to create synergies with the, the school committees vans, because we know that they have, um, vans, but it just, we, we tried to match up the calendar dates and it just didn't work. So it was, um, so there is a, uh, on the warrant up to, I believe it's seventy thousand dollars is the price. And, um, one thing that came out of this is that we learned how the procurement process would, would work. Um, so, uh, I mean, there's a lot of safeguards, a lot of safety rails to this. A lot of questions came up about safety and, and whatnot. So I think, um, it was, it was a com- comfort level of, um, a, a positive approval, a favorable approval on this, just because of, of the guide rails or the procurement process and whatnot through, um, Mr. Valani.
Well, I think a lot of people don't understand all the details. Because the school department shuts down in the summer, right? They don't use any vehicles. They don't do any programs.
That is incorrect.
But that was the impression. You got eight vans. You got all these vehicles. Well, come June fifteenth or whatever, the school department shuts down and they don't use them. So why can't we use them for the youths?
Well, we do still have kids that do, go to school throughout the summertime and they utilize those vans. And I think also when you look at the need for, uh, the, the youth center, it's after school. Well, our vans are still on use after school, bringing all of our students home. So they were, what we had hoped would be potential shared services was found to be really, it's, it's at that same timeframe, that same window of time for needs. So certainly, uh,
It's the same Milford kids. And I think it was important, we had the school committee and the youth center in the same night at the FinCom. So we could discuss all the issues. You know, cause like I say, a lot of people say, well, school, school shut down in June and all those vans sit around with nothing to do. And then you turn around and say, but how about the summer programs? How about this? How about that?
Right, exactly. And that they're utilized, they're utilized twelve months out of the year.
Yeah, so, so I just want to say that, um, Jen, Jen Ward does a fantastic job with the youth center. Um, if she didn't think she needed a van, she would not ask for a van. Um, she, she puts everything into that, to that youth center. And again, we're lucky as a town to have a town park, a youth center, senior center. So this is just one of those things that we should.
Well, the other thing that we had to take into consideration in my mind was that you had youth center staff using their own cars. And I mean, God help us if something happened. You know, that you're asking of employee to use their car to drive around and do town business. Cause at the end of the day, the youths are ours. The programs they run are ours. So that came up. And then we did learn a lot because one of the bids that came in was strange. It was seventy thousand dollars. One of Jerry Hyatt brought up, this van costs fifty thousand new. It's two years old. How can it be seventy? So the whole craziness, the whole mishigas of figuring out, how do we pick? Who decides? And we got agreement that they would have up to seventy thousand dollars. And they'll bring the three bids, because even if it's on the state bid list, because given the choice, I'd rather support a local vendor. As long as it's the same amount of money, I don't want to pay, you know, thirty percent more. But if you from Oki Finoki bids fifty grand and you from Milford, Hope Dale, Mendon, the area bids fifty, I'd rather give it to you. So we got agreement that they will bring, the youth center will bring the three bids, the three choices, because state bid list, they just pick them to Rick Valani and the capital committee to review it before they issue a purchase order. That way it eliminates any questions about, did anybody really check?
Yeah, one of the reasons that we heard with, because the prices were increasing, it just comes down to supply and demand with the supply chain of these, these special vehicles. I mean, it's not every day you have a twelve passenger van being made off the assembly line. So.
Right.
But the good news is it's a state bid list that's good for a period of time.
Exactly.
So they can't turn around and say, eh, we said fifty thousand, just kidding. Now we want to charge you fifty-eight. I don't think you can just change the price that you put on the state bid list. So we'll have plenty of time for Jen and her staff to look it over, make sure they can come up with three acceptable bids and give them to Rick to place the order.
Excellent.
If it's approved by town meeting, obviously. The assessor's vehicle.
So this is an answer for forty thousand or up to forty thousand dollars to purchase a, a vehicle, also using the state bid list, but for the assessors, um, the board of assessor staff, they're using personal vehicles for town business. Um, so you look at that and you go, eh, there's a liability that comes with that. And when you have people driving around, um, you know, using their own vehicles. They roll up someplace and they're in a car that's not marked with the town's logo on the side of it that could be uncomfortable when they're doing town business. There's also when you're trying to hire somebody, some people who are applying for that job don't want to put those miles on their car. Um, so when you're thinking about attracting, you know, talent and retaining staff, um, you know, they're putting a lot of miles on their car. It makes sense to have a town vehicle show up to do town business.
And especially where we've lost employees, you know, potential employees, as we were trying to hire somebody to other towns because of that reason. They said, if I go work for XYZ town, they have an assessor's vehicle, so I don't have to use my own. And, you know, people will say, well, you're getting the IRS rate for mileage. Yeah, but anybody who's lived on that, it kind of covers you, kinda. But not really. And most people don't want to burn up their cars.
Can we go back to the article where we need traffic surveillance cameras?
Yeah, you got it. But, you know, you think about it, they're not easy miles. You know, I used to put a ton of miles on my car driving to work, but it was sixty miles, fifty of it on the highway. Those are relatively easy miles. Cars that drive around Milford and start and stop every half and quarter mile, it's like police cruisers. They take a toll on the vehicle. So the question came up, again, the assessors had no idea what the value to put on, so they put up to fifty thousand. And if I remember right, they got bids for thirty, thirty-three and thirty-eight was something like that. So the fifty thousand dollars is the upper limit of what they could spend, but obviously they have to turn the bids in, as we mentioned, to Rick Valani. He's our procurement officer, which is a discussion for another day. We're a hundred and fifty million dollar company and we don't have a purchasing manager. That's something to start, not that Rick doesn't do his best, but.
It's another show, Will.
Another show. Number twenty-three, police station tiles.
So this is a carpet project, um, at the police station, eighty-two thousand dollars is the ask. Um, I'm saying the carpet's worn out and needs to be replaced. I'll admit, I haven't been down to the police department to see these, uh, see the carpet, um, not on that subcommittee or, you know, have any reason to be down there, but I, I trust that things like this, just like we have the library with a lot of wear and tear, carpet wears out and even little projects, we've been talking about this as a theme through tonight, like even little projects or small administrative things, everything's got to go through town meeting. So even carpet replacement goes through town meeting.
And it's been on, you know, if you look at the long range plan, long range capital plan. This is something that, um, as soon as this town meeting is over, I will send out to you as head of school and to every department head, a note saying, here are the dates that we're going to have FinCom meetings. We'd like to have a capital meeting before it. And we do that for two reasons. One, it keeps you from going out another night. But two, there's always the issue of getting room three, because that's the only one you can videotape. Or room fourteen, you can also, but that's too small. So we'll start by going through your plan in January, February, March, whatever month. And then as it gets really close to town meeting, twenty-four, come August, September, we'll review it article by article. So the first cut is done to look at five, ten years, what's on there? Because in way back when, if we had a good year, like this year, we had an eight million dollar surplus. All of a sudden it was amazing how many items became safety issues. You know, they weren't before and now we have a plan to say, okay, Chris, that stairwell wasn't a safety issue six months ago before you found out we had eight million. that stairwell wasn't a safety issue six months ago, before you found out we had $8 million surplus. How is it so critical now? So that's, a lot of people, again, don't realize that the vetting process, some of these school articles, the boilers.
Right.
How many years have we had the boilers on the plan?
A number of years, right? Because we always knew it was coming along, so it's been along for at least five years at a minimum.
And we had it spaced out over three years.
Over three years.
Then we got a grant, so we got it better off in one year. But that's the whole process that a lot of times people don't understand. Is that some of these articles have been reviewed by initial screen by the subcommittee, the capital subcommittee, a final screen by the capital subcommittee, and then the recommendation goes to the full FinCom. So you've had two or three touches on all these articles.
I think you made a great point. And so if anybody wants to see more about these projects along the way, that's the place to come. By the time you get to this moment when the warrants together, there's been numerous meetings and chances where you could have heard a lot of discussion around any of these items, capital items. And they're open meetings, so of course they're welcome. Anybody in the public is welcome to come join.
And if you think about it, a lot of times people will say, why is it that the FinCom agrees with almost everything on the warrant? You never have arguments. It's like you haven't come to the subcommittee level, have you? You know, absolutely, in about two months, the school committee is gonna come and say, we need a $9 billion increase next year in order to survive. And the FinCom is gonna beat their chest and say, we're poor, we have no money. And then somewhere over the next three months that we hash through it, we come up with what's doable. People don't see that. They just, oh, so you came up with a number and the FinCom said yes?
Not so much.
Not, not for anybody who's lived through it.
Exactly.
So, but that's the reason that a lot of times it seems so smooth. They haven't been there to see.
There's a lot of meetings that happen before the biggest meeting.
Okay. Sawpoint coming up.
Yeah, this is so unfortunate. The, the audio system up at Upper Town Hall, I guess anybody that has been to a town meeting lately, the sound system basically is shot. And that is due to the way it was originally installed, I guess. It was not installed properly. And I don't think our IT director was there around there.
It wasn't that it wasn't installed properly, it, it was installed correctly. It was purchased incorrectly. Because they bought one that is not set up to be in the hot, humid conditions. So I can't yell at the people, they installed it right.
Well, they didn't install it in a cooler, I guess.
Well, that's, but you said, here's the specs.
Right.
We got it in, we put it in and found out that the system we bought cannot live in a hot, humid environment. Well, third floor of Town Hall is what? All hot, all humid. So the thing fried. $150,000 later, because a lot of people are gonna remember that, that, this system, three, four years old? So this one now, what you're paying for is the environmental controls. It's actually got a little cooler built in. So during the summer, it'll keep it at whatever it is, 72 degrees Fahrenheit, 18 degrees Celsius, whatever the numbers are, so that the electronics don't fry.
Yeah, makes sense.
It would be nice to have that in place, so when we have the May town meeting, we can actually hear what's going on. Okay. Number 24. 25.
So this is a no-cost law change, really like changing the bylaws from the treasure, which I believe it's what it's allowing the treasure to do is, is you're kind of being in compliance with investment strategy for OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. So it's really about managing retirement funds, as I understand it.
It's to bring us into compliance. I mean, Chris Pill has done a great job managing our money. Especially when you look at OPEB, because we're only about 80 million short. And we're lucky, because we've been putting money away. Zach and Chris have been recommending and town meeting's been approving, putting money away every year, take a little bite out of the apple. There's a lot of towns that have nothing put away. Because people forget, when the teachers, and I'm not picking on teachers, but teachers retire. They have their own retirement fund that pays them their retirement. But the town still is on the hook for their medical. That's OPEB, for all those other benefits. Now, back in ancient times, medical was never an issue. Nobody cared. Now, it's millions of dollars a year. And it's only getting more and more expensive. So when you hear about OPEB, yes, it's a scary movie that it's 60 or 80 million dollars we're gonna have to pay. But we got many years to do it and we just keep nibbling at it. Okay. Number 26, fire collective bargaining, half a million bucks.
So when it's time to do any type of collective bargaining or negotiations with any of the unions in town, we deliberately don't budget an increase. We don't wanna signal to somebody that, yes, we're, we're locking in like a 5% budget expense, so that gives sort of somebody a target for a negotiation. What that means is, once the negotiation, the collective bargaining comes in, then we gotta do the catch-up. And so we have a $550,000 catch-up for the firefighters association. And it's for the last, last year and this year's expense. And we do this on purpose, is really the point. We don't wanna budget this expense because we're kind of doing a disservice to the town if we do it that way, but then it means we do have to do a catch-up like this.
Well, you know, you think about it, if I say I've got 5% to spend, where do you think the union negotiators are gonna start? They're gonna say, oh, we'll only take three of it? They're gonna start at 5% because they know you've got it funded. So we leave it open-ended and then come back as soon as it's closed that year and fund the retroactive pay. Well, it's time to take a break. We're a little more than halfway through. So to our six loyal viewers, this is part one. We'll be back to do part two in a few minutes.